I would ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with the creating of justice for all.
I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you and thank you for coming this evening and participating with us. I am John Weinstein. I’m the chairman of the Board of Alkasan. I’m also the treasurer here in Allegheny County. I’m going to introduce the people that are sitting at the dais with me. To my left is Arletta Williams. She’s the executive director of Alkasan. Next to her is Bill Inks. He is our CFO at Alkasan. Next to me is the chairman of this subcommittee, Greg Jones, and a board member at Alkasan. Next to him is Corey O’Connor. He is a member of Pittsburgh City Council and a board member at Alkasan. And next to him is Dan Thornton, who is our manager of customer service and billing at Alkasan. This event is a historic event and monumental because, over the years, Alkasan has never done anything like this before. We have a lot of new board members who have a lot of new ideas, and conceptually, we have come up with a program to help people. And that’s really what this is about. We appointed a subcommittee for the Customer Assistance Program several months ago, and I had asked Mr. Jones to chair that. And he has done a phenomenal job, meeting with people and getting ideas, and this is one component of that. Your input is very important to us. That’s why we’re here. And we will stay here as long as we have to, to hear everything that everyone has to say. As we put this program together, our goal is to make sure that the low-income people in Allegheny County are protected throughout the course of this project. And as many of you know, this will be the largest construction project in the history of this region. And it’s mandated by the federal government that we do this. How we do it is all up to us. This is an inclusive process, and we are spending an exorbitant amount of time and effort to make sure that this is done right. All of the board members of Alkasan are volunteers. None of us get paid to do this. And it’s very important to us to hear from you, regardless of the organization that you represent. Your input is vitally important to how we formulate this program. So with that being said, I would like to turn the hearing, the public hearing, over to Mr. Jones to operate this. And thank you again for coming, and I look forward to hearing everyone’s comments and viewing any kind of visual aids that we have. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It’s great to see such a large turnout, and we’re looking forward to hear from everybody. Before we get started, I wanted to just bring everybody up to speed on the work that’s been done today by the CAP Committee. As the chairman mentioned, the CAP Committee was created in March of 2015. We met shortly thereafter with Alkasan staff to better understand what previous efforts had been made to create a customer assistance program, what discussions had been had, what issues had arisen. It was a productive meeting, and as a follow-up to that, we met with some folks from the Clean Rivers Campaign, where they presented a document that provided some best practices from across the region and was really helpful for us in understanding the framework of how other cities had dealt with this issue. It was not completely apples-to-apples in that, in other cities, the water and sewer authorities were combined, whereas we are a separate entity from the water authority. But it was helpful in seeing the parameters that we usually were defined to try to capture the most amount of folks that needed help with paying their bills. For the committee itself has met now, subsequent to that, a total of three times, and each one of those meetings was about understanding a different component of customer assistance programs. The first meeting was with the groups that already administer similar programs. This was a meeting where we met with PWSA, Dollar Energy Fund, Pennsylvania American Water. We met with folks from the state that administer the Lihei Program, as well as Peoples Gas. And it was a very helpful, useful meeting for us in understanding what went into their programs, what works, what doesn’t work, what they would improve if they had the opportunity. After that, we took an opportunity to meet with the billing agencies, because you don’t pay your bill to Alkasan. You cut your check to the water company, and the water company pays Alkasan quarterly. That meant that any rebate or any deduction that we were able to put onto a bill had to be done indirectly. We had to actually provide it as a subsidy or a reduction in rate to the water company that actually sends you your bill. So that was a meeting where we brought in, of course, you know, the largest one being PWSA, but also a lot of the municipal water authorities that you actually write your check to every month. Finally, we regrouped with the committee and with Alkasan staff to talk about what we’ve heard, and around that time, we had more and more folks coming to the meetings and felt that there were additional voices that needed to be heard as part of that process. And I think the purpose of this hearing tonight is to do that, is that we do want to give everybody a chance to provide input into this process so that we make sure that we create a CAP program that benefits as many people as possible and provides the greatest possible benefit to the folks that are most in need. So tonight, let me give you a little overview of how we’re going to do this. This hearing is going to be in two parts. The first part of the hearing, we are inviting a few groups that had reached out to us to present. You’ll see the PowerPoint is set up. There’s four groups that want to present. We’re going to allow those groups approximately 10 minutes. If it goes on to 15 minutes, that’s okay, but we’re asking to try to keep it around 10 minutes. We’ll let you go ahead and do your full presentation afterwards. If anybody here has any questions, we can use that for time for Q and A. Once that’s completed, we’re going to invite everybody up for public comment. Please, if you intend to speak and you have not filled out a card yet, please make sure that you do. Can bring it up to me in the meantime. The microphone is over there. There’s a three-minute limit on speaking. There’s on a timer system. Once you start, the light will be green. When there’s one minute left, it will turn yellow, makes a noise, I believe. Is that right? And then, when the three minutes are up, the red light comes on and it makes a lot of noise. So please, when you reach the three minutes, if you can conclude your remarks, and I will call the next person up. So with that, I think we’d like to jump into the public presentations. And is it going to be the Public Utility Law Project going first? Is that okay? We’ll do that. And if you could, you know, state your name and organization for the record.
I’m sorry.
That’s okay. There you go.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Patrick Cicero. I am the executive director of the Pennsylvania Utility Law Project. Although you called it the Public Utility Law Project, you’re in good company. Everybody does. So I’m going to be talking tonight about a few different things. I’m going to give you a slightest overview about us as an organization, and then I’m going to talk generally about water and sewer unaffordability within the Alkasan Service Territory and present a picture of why this matters. The bulk of my testimony, though, is going to be about the structure of a CAP program, what mitigating unaffordable bills and preventing shut-offs would do. And then lastly, I’m going to touch on how you can leverage municipal involvement, how you can get the 83 municipalities that are within your service territory, comprise your service territory, to buy into this, to participate in the advantage to them in doing so. So first about Pulp, who we are. We’re a legal aid office connected with the Pennsylvania Legal Aid Network. We serve the entire state of Pennsylvania. We represent only low-income individuals. We typically work almost exclusively in energy issues, electricity and natural gas. We’re very closely with Peoples, Natural Gas, Duquesne Light, et cetera. But we are a legal aid firm. We work closely with neighborhood legal services here in Pittsburgh and other legal aid offices throughout the state. What we do is, on behalf of low-income ratepayers and individual utility customers throughout the Commonwealth, we represent them, provide advocacy, training, input, and support. So here’s my goal. My goal with this testimony is fourfold, as I indicated at the beginning. And I want to start with water and sewer bills in context, and I want to start with the financial and social cost of unaffordable bills. A sewer bill, on its own, or in combination with a water bill, is only one of many bills that a household must pay. Low-income households struggle mightily. At a minimum, they pay taxes and they pay rent. They pay for food and transportation and childcare and healthcare costs, electric, gas, trash, water, and sewer. And for households with fixed incomes, parents in low-wage jobs, there’s often not enough money to go around. There’s more month at the end of their money than there is money at the end of the month. Households must make decisions, for example, between paying rent or paying for prescriptions or sewer bills. Lessening any of these essential bills has the effect of stretching an already thin budget further and allowing households to avoid catastrophic circumstances of non-payment of sewer, which results in termination of water service. The simple reality is this, and you know it: unaffordable utility bills lead to unpaid utility bills. This leads to a host of consequences for low-income households and communities in which they reside. One such consequence is forced mobility. Households may move either within or outside of the municipalities within the Alkasan Service Territory. If a residence is rendered uninhabitable due to a lack of sewer service, if a household doesn’t have enough funds to cover arrears and fears termination, or if the household simply seeks more affordable shelter, which includes water and sewer and other essential utilities, they may move, and that results in forced mobility. This frequent mobility adversely impacts communities and municipalities and the families that these individuals reside in. It also contributes to a loss of housing and homelessness. Bill assistance programs help keep vulnerable communities intact and help keep vulnerable households housed. So I want to take a quick look at some poverty statistics within the Alkasan Service Territory. There’s an appendix attached to the testimony that goes through each of the municipalities within the service territory, presenting detailed poverty statistics. It should come as no surprise to you that those at the greatest risk of a loss of water and sewer service are those who are poorest within Alkasan Service Territory. Within the territory, approximately 20% of all households have total household income less than $20,000 per year, and 31% of all households within Alkasan Service Territory have household income of less than $30,000 per year. While rates of poverty vary between municipalities, the vast majority of those municipalities located within Alkasan Service Territory have households living in poverty. For example, in the city of Pittsburgh, 13% of households, 17,000-plus, have incomes below $10,000, and another 8% incomes below $15,000. But Pittsburgh is not alone. In Braddock, 59% of households have income below $25,000. A family of four is considered to be living at the poverty level if they have a household of income of $24,250. In Brentwood, 30% of households have income below $25,000. In East Pittsburgh, 39% of households have income below $20,000. McKees Rock, 21% of households have incomes below $10,000 per year. And in Mount Oliver, 36% of households have incomes below $15,000 per year. As you can see from this data, unaffordable utility service is not isolated in certain pockets of Alkasan Service Territory or limited to a small percentage of that territory. Rather, it is persistent and pervasive across all corners of the service territory, and it is therefore critical to address through adoption of a comprehensive and far-reaching program, an affordable CAP design. So what constitutes affordability? Affordability of utility bills such as electric, gas, and water and sewer is generally looked at through the lens of a burden. What is the burden that these bills impose upon low-income ratepayers? And it’s typically expressed as a percentage of income. In other words, a sewer bill is a percent of, a sewer burden is the percent of the gross income a household pays for sewer service. Or a water and sewer burden is the percent of gross income a household pays for water and sewer service. Alkasan recognized this reality in its wet weather plan when it talked about sewer burdens in the context of that plan. Because municipalities within the service territory vary in how they bill for sewage, both water and burden on its own and a water and sewer burden combined should be considered in constructing an appropriate customer assistance program. It should be noted that those municipalities with the highest poverty levels within Alkasan Service Territory have combined or mixed billing both for water and sewer. So what are we looking at? Sewer alone is unaffordable for many households. If you look at the slides here, and you can look at Appendix C of the testimony that I provided, you can see that, as rates increase, households will face significantly higher sewer burdens. For example, in 2016, households with income less than $5,000 a year have a sewer burden of 8.52%. That’s just the sewer burden, based on Alkasan’s rate schedule. A burden that will increase to 10.4% in 2018, households with income up to $10,000 a year, of which there are a significant number, already have a sewer burden in 2016 of 4.26% of household income. A burden that will increase to 5.2% when we get to 2018. As a general rule, and you can see how the rates increase as time goes on, as the planned increases happen. As a general rule, many individuals and many organizations have pegged what constitutes affordability as 2% of median household income for both water and wastewater service separately or 4% total. This has been widely used as a metric. It’s been widely cited as something that should be looked at. Our judgment, however, is that this threshold is unfortunately too high. It will not produce affordable bills for low-income households. The methodology and our judgment has two serious flaws. First, it is just a guess as to where that trade-off lies. Despite decades of debate, there’s never been social science research validating 2% of median household income or area median income. Second, it’s unlikely that 2% of area median income or median household income is the right target to guide development. That is four times the amount of a household who’s living on public assistance and nearly twice what a household gets at the poverty level. As it is explained more fully as I go on, our threshold, what we believe is affordable for sewer service alone, is between 1.5 at the low end and 3% at the high end of actual household income, not median household income. So what do we do to mitigate the crisis? To mitigate the crisis, we need an efficient and effective rate affordability program. One of the principal policy strategies of closing the gap between inadequate income and real cost of living is the public subsidization of particular expenses within a household budget. A clear impact of such program is sending the appropriate price signals to households, price signals that are delivered at affordable rate. If you deliver a price signal that is for an unaffordable bill, it is no price signal at all. In the absence of an affordable bill, a price signal is impeded in two specific ways. First, the price signal provided through the price of consumption is only effective if the customer has the ability to respond to it, the actual ability to pay for a bill. When a customer can afford only to pay a fraction of his or her bill, the impact of the price per unit is meaningless. The impact of any increase is meaningless because it’s unaffordable. Second, the impact that the price of current consumption has, it must apply to the total bill, and it must apply not only to the bill that is coming on a month-in and month-out basis, but also to arreages. Thus, an effective CAP program must contain, in our judgment, these three components: a rate affordability component, an arriage management component, and a water conservation component. So let’s look at each of them briefly. First, a rate affordability component. A rate affordability component implemented by Alkasan should be directed at reducing sewer bills to an affordable percentage of income while at the same time generating benefits for the communities that Alkasan serves. As discussed earlier, we’re talking about a sewer burden of 1.5% to 3%. This low-income discount should be set so it helps advance some pre-established objectives like preventing termination of service and retaining service. Given the structure of Alkasan’s relationship with its customers, the focus on the recommendations here are how Alkasan can create a structure to reduce a sewer burden for households and incentivize customer municipalities to develop a companion program that reduces water portion of the bill and therefore ensures affordability of the service as a whole. This is essential because most households don’t think of these as two discrete services. They think of them simply as their water bill. So who’s the eligible population? In constructing a program, Alkasan must appropriately target households that will benefit the most. As evidenced by the data cited earlier, the most economically vulnerable households within Alkasan Service Territory are those households with income less than $30,000 per year, which constitutes 31% of all end-users obtaining water and sewer service within the service territory. Most policy experts recognize that in structuring a program such as this, the value of gross income differs for families depending on family size. Generally, households with less than 250% of federal poverty income guidelines struggle significantly to pay their utility bills. The benchmark often used by low-income advocates in Pennsylvania is the Pennsylvania Self-Sufficiency Standard, published periodically by Pathways, Pennsylvania. By way of example, the current self-sufficiency standard for one adult and one preschool child, as well as one infant child living in Allegheny County, is close to $50,000 per year. Despite the fact that the data suggests that households living with incomes as high as 250% of federal poverty levels struggle to pay their bills, most utility programs targeting bill payment have categorically limited eligibility to 150% of the poverty level. We’re proposing a middle approach, which targets households up to 200% of the federal poverty level. Households at lower tiers will likely require both a bill affordability component and an arriage management component, whereas households at the upper tiers may only require arriage management and water conservation components. All households, in our judgment, should be targeted for water conservation components. These are the tiered sewer burdens that we’re proposing. Between 0 and 50% of the federal poverty income guideline, we’re proposing a targeted sewer burden of no more than 1.5% of the individual household’s income. Between 51 and 100%, 2% of that household’s household income. 101 and 150%, no more than 2.5, and between 151 and 200%, no more than 3. It’s important to note that these targets are designed to be maximums. In other words, where a household is already paying less than the targeted burden, that household should be able to continue to pay less and get the other benefits of the CAP program, such as arriage management and water conservation, should they need it. It is expected that individuals at this higher income level, likely the 101% to 200%, may not need as much of a bill discount program to reach the levels of affordability here. Of course, as costs continue to increase, the more households will fall into the unaffordable range. So how should these percentages be distributed? We believe that assistance should be distributed through fixed credits. Because Alkasan does not have a direct billing relationship with end-user households, the most effective way to deliver discounts is through a fixed dollar amount on a customer’s bill that, on the back end, would serve as a discount of the amount payable from Alkasan’s direct client, the municipality, to Alkasan. On the receivable end, from funding from the program would “pay” for this credit so as to make whole the amounts owed by the municipality. The key in achieving rates is using a targeted sewer burden. Here’s how we imagine it would work. First, you calculate a burden-based payment. Looking at the household, you would determine what percentage of income that household would fall into. And the example I give here is a four-person household with $12,000 in income would be at 49% of the federal poverty level. They have an affordable sewer burden of 1.5%, which, 1.5% of $12,000 is $180 a year, or no more than $15 per month for sewer service. You then calculate the household’s actual sewer bill. Assuming a household has an undiscounted monthly Alkasan-related sewer charge of $32 per month, or $384 a year, that household would need a $17 bill credit. We think this is a way to get at percentage of income in a way that we believe would work with the structure of Alkasan’s billing system, so that the municipality could put that bill credit on their account and account for it in terms of the purchase of receivables or payables that are owed to Alkasan on a quarterly basis, in a way that ensures that Alkasan and the utility, as well as the household, can account for it. This fixed credit does a number of things. First, it provides a strong conservation incentive for the low-income customer. It’s typically calculated once a year and recalculated at intervals no more than that. And so if the household uses less than the amount of water that is calculated for the burden, they save energy, right? They save on the bill. It’s designed to allow the program to work on a specific operating budget. You know how much you have to pay. And it also makes billing less complicated and allows bill back to the payables and receivables between the billing agent and Alkasan in a way that we believe might make some sense. In addition to a bill discount program, we believe an arriage management program is significantly important. It is accepted practice that a bill payment program alone does not reach affordability for all households. Write-offs such as arriage management are necessary to get households even. Customers may not be able to stay current, and they need to get even to be able to make do with the sewer service that they have. The arriage management component recommended to accompany the rate affordability program will reduce pre-program arrears to a manageable level over an extended period of time. So this program is designed to drive affordability not only for arrears that are incurred, but also for arrears that are happening on an ongoing basis. So the principal idea is that there is an exchange. In exchange for, the utility will, in exchange for complete payment towards future bills for current usage, offer a series of credits which, over a specified period of time, result in complete retirement of arrears that the customer had at the time they enter the CAP program. Through this arriage management program, arrears are frozen and not subject to collection, late fees, or interest. With each full payment towards future bills, a customer earns credit towards his or her pre-program arrears over time. So long as the customer remains active in the CAP program within the rate affordability program, he or she receives a credit, reducing the amount of arrears that they had. By the end of time, the time period for the program, the household’s pre-program arrears should be reduced to zero. There are a variety of ways that this can be structured. We believe that a forgiveness credit should be earned when a customer makes in-full payment, regardless of when that payment is made. In other words, if they miss a payment, so long as they catch up, they can get arriage forgiveness for the complete in-full payments. While experience shows that sometimes individuals even enrolled in rate affordability programs can’t make payments, imperfect people need systems that allow room to maneuver without resulting in removal from the program. The time period over which the credits are provided must be short enough to be realistic, but long enough to be affordable. To suggest, for example, that arrears should be reduced over a four- or five-year period doesn’t really match with how most low-income families plan budgets. Our recommendation is that two or three years, 24 or 36 months, is a much more realistic program and matches the programs that exist within the utility infrastructure that we have. Although some arriage management programs have a customer co-payment requirement, I do not recommend such a requirement. It may be philosophically appealing to require “customer responsibility” for arreages, but it’s not appropriate when those arreages were incurred as a result of unaffordable bills. Arreages and customer responsibility must be grounded in the reality that these households are struggling mightily. The appeal of a co-payment requirement also must be grounded in the reality that it is logistically complicated to account for how those co-payments work. Applying co-payments, accounting for them, particularly with the complicated billing arrangements that exist between Alkasan and the municipality itself, may indeed be more costly than they save. Lastly, in addition to these two, I believe a water conservation component is essential. Even the rate affordability program outlined above will not reduce water bills to affordable levels for all low-income customers. Water conservation can be an effective supplement to this type of program, and it is a way that is designed to help the system as a whole. For example, Pennsylvania American Water has water conservation kits that it mails to its customers. These water conservation kits include a low-flow showerhead, faucet aerators, and a toilet tummy, which helps to reduce the amount of water being gone into the toilet. These devices are low-cost means of reducing usage for households that would effectively complement bill reduction and arriage management programs. I also recommend that Alkasan leverage existing resources within the community. Two entities, Action Housing and Conservation Consultants, Inc., are already in thousands and thousands of homes within Allegheny County under the Weatherization Assistance Program and Usage Reduction Programs of the electric and natural gas utilities. Partnering with them to deliver energy and water conservation kits at the same time will significantly increase the amount of bang that you get for your buck. We also recommend what we call as adjunctive eligibility for these programs. It would be difficult for 83 municipalities to develop their own structure. So we recommend that there be one structure, that the structure leverage existing CAP programs from existing electric and natural gas companies. The relationship that Duquesne Light and Columbia Gas and Equitable and Peoples already have with entities such as Dollar Energy can be used to assist Alkasan have with entities such as Dollar Energy can be used to assist Alcasan and participating municipalities in structuring these programs. So, for example, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. You need to cooperate with the programs that exist so that if households are already eligible for existing programs, it can shorten the amount of timeframe needed to determine eligibility. So how do you leverage municipal participation? It's essential to point out that this kind of program benefits municipalities as well. The chart that is up here demonstrates that when energy burns -- this is data from New Jersey about their universal service fund that buys down the cost of energy in New Jersey. When energy burns are less than 2%, 92% of customers pay 100% or more of their bill, right? And you can see that when energy burns go up to 2% to 3%, or 3% to 4%, or 4% to 6%, the amount of customers paying 100% of their bill, as opposed to 90% to 100%, or as opposed to 50% to 90%, or less than 50%, increases. So bill affordability programs reduce bill collection, reduce arrears, make municipalities more secure. I recommend that Alcasan incentivize the rollout of this and be willing to work with municipalities first that are going to have complementary water programs. The success of this program depends on whether municipal water and sewer authorities can be encouraged to incentivize water reduction programs. A fully implemented CAP will significantly benefit the reduction of water and sewer service as a whole. When low-income households can afford to pay their bill, there's increased payment coverage. Because many households pay these bills together, it is important to note that affordability is for sewer alone, if the entire bill is not affordable, will do little to incentivize the household to pay the bill. It simply must be affordable as a whole. However you structure the program, you must ensure, in my judgment, that each of these three pieces are accounted for: rate affordability, arrears management, and water conservation. They work in tandem; they work together. There are other means of supporting the CAP program that do exist. It's important to note that Alcasan could encourage municipalities to waive late fees, security deposit requirements, penalties. These things do nothing to incentivize poor people who can't afford to pay to pay. Tacking on a late fee does nothing but increase the bill. Lastly, I think it's incredibly important to know that ongoing input is needed. I applaud Alcasan for what it's doing already, but the most effective customer assistance programs in the utility industry are those customer assistance programs that solicit input on an ongoing basis. I highly recommend that Alcasan develop a robust, ongoing stakeholder process and a CAP advisory committee. Ultimate success of this program involves collaboration and cooperation from municipalities and other stakeholders. It would be a mistake to design a program without soliciting ongoing feedback and support, and the most successful programs have advisory committees that meet at least quarterly to vet concerns, develop solutions to problems, and recommend improvements. This is particularly important for a new initiative such as the one that's going on here. You have my contact information. I invite inquiries on an ongoing basis, and I thank you for the invitation and opportunity to submit testimony regarding matters of extraordinary significance to low-income consumers and households. I'm available and pleased to respond to questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cicero. I believe the next group would be the Urban League. Do we have anybody here from the Urban League tonight?
I'm going to be just doing a brief comments of --
Okay. All right. Jewish Family and Children's Services.
I'm with Jewish Family Children's Services Pittsburgh, and I'm the director of the Squirrel Hill Community Food Pantry and SOS Pittsburgh. We serve Squirrel Hill, but also the greater community for social services and critical need support. Thank you for having me here. So I'm on the front lines. We have a program called SOS Pittsburgh that helps people in need, people in crisis. We do invasive case management to see what the issues are, lift people up so they don't fall into poverty, and make them more self-sustainable going forward. I have four cases, these are real cases, real families, that I just wanted to read from their cases to give you an idea of some actual challenges that people in our city and our county face. For anonymity, we give the cases' numbers. This is Sarah 827. Sarah 827 has four children, a daughter 14, twin sons 12, and another son, three. Her three-year-old son was born with three holes in his heart and a leaky valve. He has to have open-heart surgeries constantly. Sarah 827 makes $28 an hour, averages around $2,000 a month. In July, she had surgery to remove a mass from her head, which meant she had to not work for one week, and then her son had surgery to remove adenoids. Therefore, she had to take more time off. Recently, her car was hit while it was parked outside her car by a drive-by. The person didn't stop. She now has to pay a deductible on her car, and her water will be shut off by the end of the month. This particular case shows somebody who is making money closer to minimum wage, but one or two little crises can throw that person right into poverty. Sarah 838 lives with her husband and two children, age four and seven. The family has been in a financial crisis since her unemployment ran out and her husband was injured. Her husband was a victim of a hit-and-run while riding his motorcycle. He has not been able to work. He is a laborer at a manufacturing company. They made small payments on the growing sewage water bill, but now that the water's been shut off for over a month, they don't know where to turn. They go to their parents' house for showers. By the end of November, they will be earning $3,742 a month with her new job and his short-term disability. He's expected to be released to work within the next month. Sarah 848 has been in two domestic violent relationships. Neither abuser is in her life at this time. She has four children, ages seven, twins age six and age four. While living with the last individual, he was very controlling and controlled the money that came into the house. After that relationship ended, she discovered that he had not paid the sewage bill, so her water has been shut off since August. She's a casual cashier at EPMC, earning $1,150 per hour, usually 35 hours per week. Bear with me two more cases. Sarah 664 has a history of major depression disorder. She lives in her own home and recently found that there is a leak in her shower faucet for which she incurred a $930 water bill. Sarah 664 became aware of this back balance in June, when the Penn Hills Water Company changed its billing periods from every three months to every month. To her surprise, she received a $930 bill that she was unaware of. The company has changed part of its billing system. Sarah 664 received the breakdown and found out that the culprit was the unexpected higher bill was from the leaking showerhead. Last case. Sarah 742 is a 57-year-old divorced woman diagnosed with uterine cancer that has metastasized to her lungs. Prior to her diagnosis, Sarah 742 worked as a caregiver for mentally challenged teenagers in a facility. Sarah 742 has had to go on family medical leave at her doctor's recommendation due to his concerns about her weakened immune system, following her surgery and follow-up chemotherapy. Sarah 742 lives with her brother, who is mentally challenged, and she is his caregiver. Sarah 724's household has been very limited with its cash flow for the past two months. Sarah's most recent water bill was much larger than expected due to the water company not being able to give her an accurate reading and had a broken water meter. When she received her current water bill, it reflected all past due readings, but at a much larger amount than she could afford. Sarah 742 does not have the funds to cover the current water bill. Sarah 742's water was shut off. So these are just some of the cases that we see at SOS Pittsburgh, where a program of last resort for people in crisis. I'd like to take the opportunity just to say that case management is very important as well, and to have some sort of program to help with self-sustainability, not just for the acute, first time, but going forward. Any questions?
Thank you. Finally, we have the Department of Public Welfare and STIU 668.
All right, good evening. Can you hear me? And thank you very much for giving us all a chance to speak with you tonight. I encourage you, as the first speaker did, say to continue the open and transparent process as this CAP program is created for citizens in Allegheny County. Now, I come to you today as a result of my time as a civil servant working for the Unemployment Office. I work at the Department of Unemployment Compensation Benefits down in Duquesne, just up the Mon River, past Homestead and Braddock. And while you would have been expecting me to come from welfare, I didn't have someone to speak from there tonight, so I came to tell a little bit of the perspective that we see from the social service agencies. I know you've already said that you've liaised with those who administer lie-heap, and I think that's a very good choice. But in the years that I've worked at the Unemployment Office, I've seen a drastic change in how services are provided for unemployed and the employers as well. Now, of course, changes to systems are natural and expected, but following transition from an intermittent worker to now a permanent worker, I've made some observations on the effects of changes in the social service agencies, and there are lessons in the way that our social service agencies provide those services. I feel those lessons can be of value to those entrusted to create this program so that it can respect the citizens. Now, before I go on, I do want to make note that I come here not as an official voice of the Department of Labor and Industry, nor the Bureau of Unemployment Compensation Benefits, or the Office of Unemployment Compensation Service Centers. I've come here to share the personal views that I have as a result of the daily work that I do, and that work just so happens to be providing assistance and information to claimants and employers alike on unemployment benefits. And also, regardless of the motives for new laws and policies in social service agencies, the effects of administration have been, are now, and should continue to be a vital component of the decision-making process. One of the most important obstacles I've seen in the past few years has been swift and substantial change to law and policy. In unemployment, that means some acts called Act 60 and Act 75 that made major changes to the way that benefits were administered. These laws were passed during periods of high unemployment, when our agency was virtually overwhelmed with the work that we already had. The result of this was staff from top to bottom in the agency that was inconsistently messaging the results of these changes to both claimants and employers. The legal changes themselves were also quite significant, and basically resulted in either citizens being ineligible for benefits or employers being penalized for slow or missed responses to requests for information. A simple posting on an internet website was neither sufficient nor to explain, nor acceptable to simply allow angry, or confused, or frightened people to discuss what they were experiencing. The results were changes that both restricted access to benefits and immediately created an increase in workflow that made it even harder for both claimants and employers to reach an agent. Restricted access to a human being is the next obstacle that I encourage you to avoid when creating this. While it may sound self-serving for me to recommend this, there's no substitute for a real person to answer questions or explain policy. If you plan to have complex eligibility requirements to ensure the integrity of your program, then you must be sure to have adequate trained staff or representatives of some kind to explain that program and those eligibility rules. There is a mindset that I feel is expanding across the country and here in the Commonwealth that technology and the internet can best serve people's needs. And in some cases, this is true. There are great advantages to doing that. However, I can't tell you how many times I spoke to an unemployed person and answered not only their questions on their eligibility, but also navigated them through the website that was supposed to be serving their needs already. Also, there's still a population of people who don't have computers or access to a computer without going to a library or state-provided location like a CareerLink office. We've reached a point where virtually everyone has a phone or access to a phone, and programs to provide assistance to phone access have been in place for decades. That's why there's no comparable program for internet yet, which is why you should be wary of making the internet a primary component of the assistance program. Straightforward communication on eligibility and expectations are a primary factor that are important as well. Explaining the numerous eligibility rules and regulations in the unemployment insurance program takes time for many reasons. The primary reason is that most people neither seek to make themselves unemployed nor wish to remain that way. Therefore, they're already unfamiliar with the insurance system as it exists. Another reason is that the unemployment insurance program is one of the oldest social programs we have, and so there's been plenty of time for rules to mature. But now, at this point, it's essential to have trained staff to explain and administer those rules. Unfortunately, those rules can feel like a proverbial series of hoops that can frustrate anybody, you know, no matter what you're dealing with. I would caution you to avoid creating such a system of hoops, or you will deliberately and wrongly push people away from your program. Lastly, I would say, consider that there is an array of reasons that so many rules exist in a program like unemployment insurance. Unfortunately, one of those reasons may be a zeal for vengeance. While no one person is responsible for this, oversight of the program is held by elected representatives. A wave of support for certain regulations can create demand that rules be put in place to deny benefits or punish claimants or employers for mistakes in an attempt to catch scofflaws. I believe that Act 60 and Act 75 may contain a spirit of such a sentiment, and there's current legislation pending right now about unemployment insurance that could create additional administrative burdens with regard to documenting workers. Now, I would strongly recommend you to not fall prey to those types of things. Try to avoid a path like that, and resist the burdensome rules in the program that would push away recipients for fear of making a mistake or overly protecting the integrity of the program. And to sum it up, that means that I'm recommending that you keep your eligibility rules simple and straightforward, provide clear and concise communication for those who are trying to use the program, train and provide access to human staff or agents of some kind in some capacity, and resist the urge to provide onerous punishment provisions. I think in some sense, you know, speakers that have come before me have basically said those things as well. I strongly believe that considering these things as a part of your overall consensus will help lead you to the creation of a program that works to actually help people, not simply assuage our collective consciousness. And I thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions for me, I'll take them.
Thank you. Real quickly, could we get your name for the record as well?
That's right. Yeah, my name is Sean Domenico from the Duquesne Unemployment Office.
Thank you, Mr. Domenico.[1736.33][1736.33](applause) Okay. We will be moving into the public session, or portion of the hearing. Please, when you come to the podium, please give your full name and your address. You'll have three minutes total. Please, as I said at the beginning, the green light will go on when it commences; the yellow light will come on when you have one minute left to speak, and the red light, along with the buzzer, will sound when the three minutes are up. When I call your name, please come forward. The first speaker tonight will be Nora Johnson.
Hi. My name is Nora Johnson. Do you want my home address? Okay.
Yeah, home address is fine.
Home address. 6433 Nicholson Street, Pittsburgh 15217. 6433 Nicholson Street, Pittsburgh 15217. I'm a member of Sixth Presbyterian Church in Squirrel Hill, and I want to thank you for holding this meeting. It's such important information that we're hearing, and I appreciate so much the opportunity to speak to the issue of the importance of a well-run customer assistance program for our stormwater abatement project. And I want to say strongly that I support the Pulp recommendations, as we heard them outlined. They're just very, very, very reasonable. I think the bottom line of a well-run CAP is that no one ever have the water shut off. And I'm speaking tonight with particularly thinking about families with children. Water is a necessity of life. For people with children, the result of a water shut off can be catastrophic because if your water is shut off, your children can be taken away from you. Imagine that as a result of a huge federally mandated Public Works project. Your water bills go up, and from your earnings at one or more low-paying jobs, as we've been hearing this evening, you can't find the funds to pay the increase. Your water gets shut off, and then the public authorities, who are overburdened, the family and the children and family support services, are overburdened as a public agency, and they come and take your children away. And we just cannot allow that to happen to any family. Thank you.[711.13][711.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. The next speaker is Reverend Vincent Kolb. Reverend?
My name is Vincent Kolb. I'm the pastor of Sixth Presbyterian Church at Forbes and Murray, and my congregation is affiliated with the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network. I have learned in 30 years of ministry that there is some help that is not help, and there is some assistance that is not assistance. I have also found that in life, there too often seems to be the occasion that there's not enough time to do it right, but always enough time to do it over. So I applaud you today for convening this public hearing, and listening to the experts who deal with clients who need assistance on a daily basis, and, as you will hear from clients themselves, who know what they need. I too heartily endorse the findings of the Pennsylvania Utility Law Project that I read this afternoon regarding customer assistance plans. Their findings echo what I heard at a roundtable of charitable organizations convened by the Hines Foundation in October. In particular, I want to affirm that the most effective customer assistance programs, both in our own community and around our nation, happen when clients have the opportunity for face-to-face coaching, or talk to a person on the phone, to work with them through their own particular circumstances, navigate a website, and learn a little bit more about their situation and how they can fully access the benefits of a program. And because Alcasan does not have a direct sewer billing relationship with end-user households, I think it's even more critical for Alcasan to implement a cap that makes this in-person coaching possible. I encourage you, when you develop and implement this cap, to do it right, so it won't have to be done over. Thank you.[849.55][849.55](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next is Matthew Bolton.
That was me with JFCS.
Next is Cassie Steenblock.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Cassie Steenblock, and I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I'm here today as program organizer for Clean Water Action. Clean Water Action works with diverse people and groups to protect our environment, health, economic well-being, and quality of life. In Allegheny County, we have more than 30,000 members who value clean water and healthy communities. We would like to applaud this committee's efforts to create a customer assistance program, and are here today to support policies that ensure it is accessible, effective, and does everything possible to prevent water and sewer shut offs. Clean Water Action was founded in 1972, and our first piece of work was around the Clean Water Act, the same law that requires we don't dump sewage into our rivers. We continue to work protecting our waterways today, and in more than 40 years, our organization's founding, those priorities have not changed. Today, our door-to-door field canvas travels all over Allegheny County, talking to residents about the environment and public health. This issue is one of our absolute favorite conversation topics at the door, because it hits home with so many different people. Many of our members get involved because our work protecting our waterways. Our members are strong supporters of green infrastructure, community benefits approach to reducing sewage overflow. At the same time, they want to ensure that the rate increases necessary for these investments do not have a disproportionate impact on people with low and fixed incomes in our community. It doesn't matter where we're canvassing, whether it's Ben Avon, Millvale, Mount Lebanon, or the city of Pittsburgh. Residents in every community see the need for a customer assistance program that provides for both area management and a bill discount in order to truly protect vulnerable citizens. This is especially important for the 6,800 senior citizens who are members of our organization, and need both these components to be included in a cap in order to get caught up on old bills and to be able to afford bills moving forward. Thank you for giving ratepayers an addition, an opportunity to provide input and development for this program, and please stand with our 30,000 members to support an accessible, effective cap that uses its leverage to prevent water and sewer shut offs. Thank you.[1034.27][1034.27](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.[1036.27][1036.27](APPLAUSE). Forgive me on this. Is it Abby Sustren?
I'm Abby Schustrom. I live on the North Side. I'm a mental health counselor, and I've been in the field for almost 10 years. In all my positions, I've worked with adults and families who are very low-income. I support Pulp's recommendations. In my career, I've seen firsthand the effect that poverty has on one's well-being and functioning. I've also seen the benefits of various programs, including customer assistance programs. As recently as last week, I sat with a woman, helping her compile the needed documents and paperwork to complete a cap she has for her gas company, and I sat with her as she expressed gratitude for the cap, that she'll be able to heat her house this winter without extreme distress or anxiety. I'm relieved to hear that Alcasan is creating a customer assistance program, as that is the only humane action to take. I'm requesting that such a program be easily accessible, that there be passed due bill forgiveness, and that under no circumstance would someone have his or her water shut off. I'm requesting this on behalf of my clients, the most ill and most vulnerable of Alcasan customers, who cannot advocate for themselves. So thank you for your time.[1131.83][1131.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next will be Wallace Hamilton, and after that will be Lisa Letterer. Mr. Hamilton?
Good evening. Thank you for the privilege of speaking. My name is Wallace Hamilton. I live at 7346 Denniston Avenue in Twistville. Economically, I'm experiencing a rough patch in life, trying to adjust to the anxiety of age discrimination in employment, among other things. One thing that motivates me is my ability to rise, wash my body, and prepare for the new day. I must admit, I have been in a position before where this holy ritual was not possible, and therewith my motivation: out the door. I won't insult you with stats about sewage increases already approved for years to come, but I would like to add a cliff note. Social Security did not provide any cost-of-living increase for next year, and there's no guarantee for the years to come. This means the elderly, the disabled, and everyone with low or fixed incomes must find money they don't have just for the privilege of flushing their toilet. We need a comprehensive plan which will foster a partnership, encourage conservation, and may even include a community service element for vouchers towards the bills for those who can't pay. Once again, I hear the voice of Dr. King echoing from the Birmingham jail: injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. This, too, is an inescapable network tied into a single garment of destiny. We embrace the Clean Water Act. We applaud efforts to restore integrity to our nation's waterways. We trust you, our officials, to do your due diligence to keep Pittsburgh a thriving metropolis. But imagine the late-night fodder if we fail to do this. Hey, you hear that? Over in Pittsburgh, they got three rivers, but they can't get water. They're cutting off water bills for the people who can least afford to pay. Or, how about this one? Some states don't even have a lake. Pittsburgh's got three cities, and they're cutting off the water bill for the people who can't pay. If we can provide reverse osmosis water purification units for hundreds of thousands of troops in another country on the other side of the world, surely we can tailor a cap program that is all-inclusive and considers every need right here at home. Thank you.[1317.61][1317.61](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next will be Lisa Letterer, and following that will be Maria Muzzi.
Thank you for having this important meeting. I'm also here with the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network, and I too agree with Pulp's recommendations. Also, having conducted qualitative interviews with dozens of users of social programs as part of program evaluations, I want to highlight the importance of easy accessibility and in-person application coaching. First, it's clear that a mentoring program I evaluated in the Pittsburgh public schools would not have achieved such success if the users had not been prompted constantly by folders hanging throughout the hallways of schools to sign up. Like them, potential users of this CIP program should literally have signup forms at their fingertips. Second, I remember one parent who only enrolled her son in this program, although he was otherwise a perfect candidate, after the program director had personally spoken to her and assured her of its merits. In the same way, the CIP may not reach potential users unless they receive personal application help and assurances. Thank you.[1411.13][1411.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.[1413.13][1413.13](APPLAUSE). Ms. Muzzi?
Yeah.
And next will be Mayor Richard Latanzi.
Hi. My name is Maria Muzzi. I live at 1429 Poplar Street, Pittsburgh 15205. It's the Crafton Heights area of Pittsburgh, and I used to work as a food stamp specialist for a nonprofit organization called Just Harvest. It's an anti-poverty organization, and I, as a food stamp specialist, I would apply low-income families and individuals for the SNAP food stamp program and for other public benefits as well. And what I have found from working with low-income households is that a good deal of them, of course, rent, and oftentimes their water and sewage bill is included in their rent. But of course, if water and sewage bills are to go up, there's a chance that landlords will also be raising their rent to compensate for that, and most poor people I know are struggling to pay their rent as it is, so it would definitely create a hardship. So another program that I had applied folks for at Just Harvest was LIHEP, which is, of course, the federal-funded heating assistance program, which is administered here in Pennsylvania through the Department of Human Services. And there's actually a provision in LIHEP that says that households renting with heat included that have a specific or designated portion of their rent used for their heating costs are considered to have a heating responsibility, and therefore, they are eligible for heating assistance. So I think there should be some thought about people that would pay a water sewage bill indirectly through their rent, that they also would be eligible for the customer assistance program. Thank you.
Thank you.[1524.41][1524.41](APPLAUSE). Next is Mayor Latanzi, and following that will be Tassie Beizers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. Actually, I came here tonight to get some information to take back to my city, which is the city of Clayton. But when the lady out there asked me if I'd be interested in speaking, I did want to pass up on the chance. The city of Clayton, about two or three years, we're in the same situation. We had unfunded mandates from the federal government that we needed to repair our sewer lines to the tune of about $40 million. As an Act 47 community, we did not have the money. We didn't know which way to turn. We had several meetings that lasted a year and a half, kept getting the threatening letters from the government, saying that the DEP is to, you guys need to make these corrections, or you'll be fined X amount of dollars per month. So eventually, the Sewerage Authority of Clayton, which is our municipal authority, said, hey, you know what? I know McKeesburg just recently pulled this off. We would be interested in seeing if we could purchase your lines to try to help you guys out with your problem. And we, as a city, our credit was really bad. To get a bond, it was nearly impossible. I think we were contemplating like 12% or junk bond, but the Sewerage Authority was able to get something around 3%, 3.5%. So, I mean, this went on for a year and a half, and I was so happy to get it done. You know, we got rid of a little bit of a burden, and these lines are going to get fixed, and so on and so forth. Lo and behold, a couple years later, I got some real horror stories. I got people in my community right now that are making some hard decisions. You know, do they want to eat? Do they want to take their medicine? I haven't been on vacation in a couple years. They want to pay their sewage, they keep their water on, so they're not embarrassed by the rest of the community and their friends. They got their kids coming home from school or from out of town for the holidays. It would be embarrassing to say that my water got shut off or had no sewage. I mean, myself as a mayor, to get a phone call to say, hey, Public Works got to go over on X amount of street, we just found seven or eight buckets of fecal matter that somebody put in the woods, that's embarrassing. And I'm told that roughly about 136 people in my town of 6,800 people are without water and suits today. I mean, this is American, guys. I mean, this is terrible. I mean, I bleed for the problems of these poor people that need help, and then we get these unfunded mandates, and then these small cities like myself, you know, this is stone at us. I'm just begging you guys, please, know what I'm going through. It's not an easy decision, but these things could get out of hand. You got people making some bad decisions. Please help them out, and I love that cap program. I want to find out more about it. Thank you so much.[1666.21][1666.21](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mayor Latanzi, and I think this committee would be happy to, you know, once our work is completed, to sit down with you and to work on sharing what we've learned and what our program ultimately looks like. Thank you again.
Hi. I'm Tassie Beizers. I'm a ratepayer from Westview, 605 Center Avenue, 15229. And I'm also a member of PIN. I would like to thank the Pennsylvania Utility Law Project for such a good presentation and good recommendations to you. In the United Kingdom, our mother, they will not shut anybody's water off. Water is a right. They handle that by turning down the pressure, so it's not convenient, but nobody has their water shut off. When we had lunch at the Hines Foundation, we heard a lot about people who go to the customer assistance programs that you interviewed, and they talk about how they miss a day of work. And maybe by missing a day of work, they didn't accomplish what they needed to accomplish, and they have to come back and miss another day of work. And that reminded me of, and this is not necessarily apples to apples, but an experience I had in 2004. I lived in Sharpsburg. My house was flooded by Ivan, and all of us had our gas shut off. It took seven appointments before my gas was turned on. Several of those appointments were days I had to miss work. And if I had this kind of job that I talked to people about with McDonald's, with Arby's, whatever, if they didn't show up because they were waiting to have their gas turned on, or had to go apply for a customer assistance program, they'd just get fired. on or had to go apply for a customer assistance program, they'd just get fired. Thank you.
Next up is Darrell Rapp. Councilman Rapp?
Thank you for hosting this event. I want just to say, my name's Darrell Rapp. I'm on Borough Council in Swissville. My address is 1125 Milton Street, 15218. I know that there have been some excellent comments, personal stories, so forth. I come at it from a slightly different point of view and want to make some other types of comments. The first is, I definitely want to say that I really want to applaud the fact that you're doing a lot of data gathering and finding out best practices. This is 2015. We're almost on 2016. The ability to make a 21st century customer assistance program should not be possible. It should be a no-brainer. And incorporating some of the recommendations from the individuals as well as the utility law project sounds like it should be done. As a public process, the importance of inclusion and transparency is critical, and the advice of the advisory committee for a consumer assistance program, I might even suggest that you look at establishing such an advisory committee now to help to plan and develop the program rather than Alka-San developing the program independently as an Alka-San-only program so that the feedback from the community is incorporated from the get-go. So I would look at that. And also, these presentations, as well as the information that you've gathered, having that publicly available on your website, contacting people who have attended tonight and through the media and so forth, to let people know what kinds of things are being considered so that it doesn't come out of nowhere in six months or whatever kind of timeframe. So three things I want to quickly say from an individual who represents a community that has, I can't remember, maybe 15% or 20% of our population living below the poverty line. First, I want you to think about the stability of the communities. There were talked about forced mobility. That is disruptive to a community. The second thing I want to say is, you need to think about additional effects that you can spawn. For example, that mobility effects on municipalities. And please think of some of the specific stories that you heard tonight, and have some empathy towards those who may be unemployed, may have those one types of incidents that push them over into poverty.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we have the speakers from the Urban League. I have two cards. I'm not sure if both want to speak or...
My name is David Greve. I'm the SNAP Coordinator with the Urban League of Greater Pittsburgh, located here downtown at 610 Wood Street. And I want to talk just a little bit about the experiences of some of the clients that I deal with on a regular basis, many of which oftentimes look very much like the cases that you heard from the Jewish Family Center. And when I talk to clients about the kind of services that I provide, which are helping people get signed up and understand SNAP, food stamps, Medicaid, and LIHEAP, one of the most important things that I need to do is make the process understandable and simplify it down as much as possible. For SNAP, that entails a lot of different things. SNAP is a complicated application. LIHEAP is much less complicated, and I would put forth that program as being the model that you want to look at. There's a lot less in terms of documentation requirements. It's just simply a lot easier of a program to work with. Dollar Energy is also not a bad program to pick, although Dollar Energy is also administered by a variety of different local organizations. So when somebody wants to do Dollar Energy, they have to first call somebody to say that, then they have to find out, who do I actually talk to in order to get that process started? So you want to try and make it as simple as possible. The other thing to remember is that though some of these have online applications, not everybody is computer literate, and that's a lot of the times where I come in, doing these applications by phone. One of the things I really want to stress also is the importance of outreach. It doesn't matter how good your program is. If nobody knows about it, it's not going to be utilized. There was a program that actually occurred this past summer in September. It was called the Summer Crises Program. Few people had actually heard about this, and it was run through the utilities. You had to call your own utility, and the program ran very much like LIHEAP. And it was a plan by the utilities to try and get a jump start on people who are going to need help with their bills. There was very little to no outreach about this program, and as a result, almost nobody took advantage of it. It's important that the program like this form some kind of partnership with other local agencies that work with these kinds of issues, that serve these kinds of clients, things like Health and Welfare Councils, or something like the Mon Valley Providers Council, and also utilizing 211, which has been a real godsend for us to be able to quickly refer people for benefits that we're not able to provide. And lastly, I want to talk just a bit about the arrears and the importance of long-term affordability. As a part, I'm part of the Hunger Services Program at the Urban League that's also part of our housing program. All of our housing programs have long-term affordability guidelines, and it's important that we do that, not just for the program itself, but also for the person. When you help them out in some way, you want to make sure that the way that you're helping them is going to put them on a sustainable footing. If we're not thinking about this, about how we're going to deal with the past issues, and I think that the proposal by the Pennsylvania Utility Law Project, dealing with arrears and tax credits, would be a great way to do that, that's really not going to help them out ultimately. They'll find themselves right back in the same situation. So I just implore you to think about those as you consider this program. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Ciara Young, and after that will be Jennifer Kennedy.
Hi, my name is Ciara Marie Young, and I am speaking in support of Pulp's recommendations for the CAP program. I live in Homewood, and I also volunteer at after-school programs in the area, and I teach Sunday School at Bible Center Church. And I'm a former AmeriCorps volunteer at Manchester Academic Charter School. And I have recently graduated from college, so I know what it's like to be slapped in the face with bills, and I know what the anxiety feels like of missing or falling behind on a bill. But none of that compares to some of the situations of the families of the children that I worked with faced when they were grappling and making difficult decisions of which necessities they were going to pay for. And as a consequence, when some of these families couldn't pay their bills, they had to move. And studies show that when families do move from place to place, it affects the education that a child would receive. And when I'm working with children, I want these children to be the best that they can be and have access to opportunities, but it's incredibly difficult to do that and support these youths when I can't keep them in one place, knowing that they're going to multiple schools because they're trying to find more affordable rates for bills. And having a CAP program would provide, would help in providing more sustainability for a child in their education. Thank you.
After Ms. Kennedy will be Ken Regal.
First, thank you so much for the efforts you've made to this point, to put together a successful customer assistance program. I'd also like to thank all of the supporters of the Clean Rivers Campaign and others who have come out tonight to voice their support for a customer assistance program. I know that people's time is valuable, and I think it's great that so many people have come tonight. And I also want to thank the service providers who've been working with us and attended a meeting at the Heinz Endowment in September to share their takeaways on what can make an effective program. I have a report with some key takeaways and landscape that we put together from that meeting, and I'll share that with you. As you know, the Clean Rivers Campaign has long advocated for a customer assistance program. We understand that providing an effective program will be complex, but its goals are simple. As you've heard from those before me, and will likely hear from others offering testimony tonight, the program must be accessible, effective, and humane. The program must be easy to access. It has to be easy to use. It has to be easy to understand. It needs to be well-advertised, and there needs to be an opportunity to get coaching one-on-one, in person or via the phone. It must also include the essential components to make it effective: past due bill forgiveness or arrears management, bill discounts for customers, and water conservation. And probably most importantly, it is critical that the program be humane, that no one ever has their water shut off, and that Alka-San use its leverage to ensure that. We support the expert testimony given by service providers, especially Pulp, representing our core Clean Rivers Campaign partner, Action United. North Hills Community Outreach and South Hills Interfaith Ministry, which both participated in our meeting, wanted me to also register their support for Pulp's presentation tonight. Most importantly, we support the recommendation that you solicit ongoing stakeholder feedback and commit to improving the program with the help and oversight of an advisory board so that we can address even the most complex issues, including assistance to renters, getting municipal participation, and ultimately ensuring access to clean water and sewage treatment for all of the customers in the service area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I'll get coffee, everyone else. Mr. Regal?
Good evening. I'm Ken Regal. I'm the Executive Director of Just Harvest, a center for action against hunger based on the South Side. We'd like to add our voice and general endorsement of the plan and priorities laid out in the testimony by the Pennsylvania Utility Law Project. The plan they've set out is a very good one, and it's the architecture of the kind of plan that we need here in this community. We'd like to add a few additional observations and recommendations. First, the billing relationship between Alka-San and various water utilities threatens to make the implementation of any CAP plan by Alka-San much more complex. It's essential that Alka-San not just get water provider buy-in, but that you work aggressively with the water provider partners to establish parallel CAP programs with each of those providers. We're talking largely about people who are not distinguishing their sewage bill from their water bill. It's just another bill that they have, that they can't afford to pay. And so unless the CAP structure is parallel and relieving the burdens of both the water and the sewage bill, it will fall far short of our objectives. Second, as an earlier speaker mentioned, we need a mechanism that provides some layer of protection for tenants whose landlords pass water and sewage costs along to them. Many of the lowest-income, highest-risk customers that need a customer assistance program are folks who do not have sewage bills in their own name but remain at high risk for getting their water and sewer cut off if bills aren't paid and if they can't pay their landlord. And third, as we think about the longer run, and we should not hold up a CAP implementation process to do this, but as we think about the longer run, a customer assistance program is not enough to protect needy ratepayers from the impact of the major rate hikes that are coming down the pike. Alka-San and its municipal partners must aggressively pursue the creation of a separate stormwater utility system that would spread the cost of the infrastructure investments more equitably. Basing sewer bills on water use is inherently unjust. The massive infrastructure investments that are happening now are not made necessary by retail water users in low-income neighborhoods, but by large commercial entities like big-box stores and parking garages. Until we charge them their fair share, we will inevitably be charging low-income ratepayers more than their fair share. And so unless we're going to give people a mechanism that charges sewage bills according to runoff rather than water usage, we are left behind.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Jones, and after that will be Bill Bartlett.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Jones, and my address is 240 Glenwood Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15207. I'm a mother of three children, school-aged. I'm on a fixed income, I pay water and sewage. I am a board member of Action United, and we've been fighting for this assistance program for years, and we're glad to see some progress. I want to focus on two things that I think the program needs to have. One is a reduced rate for lower-income customers. I already pay $130 per month on water and sewage. If the sewage rate goes up like we predict, there's no way that we'll be able to keep up with it. Reduced rate is essential for people like me because our incomes are not going up as fast as these bills. That means that something's got to give. If I pay water, I'm sorry, if I pay water, then instead of my gas, or my gas might get turned off, or my kids are going to be with less food, if I pay the other bills, is my water going to get turned off? The other part of the program that we need to see is a grant program because life is life, and sometimes things happen that cost money that we can't control. Health issues happen, kids need clothes, accidents happen, and on a fixed income, there is not really room for these things or something. So sometimes a family can fall behind on a bill, and it's not their fault, but not be able to catch up. So we need to fund, we need a fund that can pay 200 to 500 or something like that as an emergency crisis fund so that people don't have to stay behind on their bills. So in short, we at Action United think it is most important that the CAP program you develop have both a reduced rate and a grant program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlett? And after that will be Phyllis Gaffour.
Awesome. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Bartlett. I'm Western Pennsylvania Director for Action United. Our office is at 5907 Penn Avenue in East Liberty. I first, I want to acknowledge the members of the public that came out here this evening, coming out to downtown at 5:00 PM, tucked away in a highly secure building that has entrances that are hard to find, is pretty remarkable, and I appreciate that everyone went through all that to get here. You know, and the fact that you all are taking time out of your evening with your family in order to serve the benefit, betterment of the community, is really awesome. So I thank you on behalf of myself and our membership. Action United is the state's largest organization of low- and moderate-income residents, and as such, we represent about 10,000 members and supporters here in southwestern PA. And I don't really have much more to add beyond what has already been given and my leaders that will follow. But I want to make explicit also our, otherwise, I guess, implicit endorsement of everything that the Public Utilities Law Project had. They're here, retained by our membership, as advisors on this project. And, you know, I've been very impressed with the scope and depth of their knowledge on this issue, so, you know, I encourage you all to take advantage of the resources that they have because they're deep. So I want to thank you all for your time also, because I know you all have lives too at times. Public servants, I know it's tough. But, you know, I am disappointed that Ms. Wilson isn't here. She's a member of your subcommittee. And I think if you're not able to be committed to this work, then perhaps you might need to be replaced on a committee. That's my suggestion, because this is really important. And the fact that all these folks can come out, but your committee can't, it means something to me. So thank you all.
Thank you. Next is Phyllis, is it Gaffour?
You said it correctly the first time.
How about that? And then after this will be John Harris.
Good evening. Thank you very much for scheduling this hearing, so you may ascertain the impact of a rate hike on consumers in low-income areas and family budgets. Please let me detail the impact of the water utility on my budget and health this day. I'm in extreme pain. I've had to carry 50, 60, 100-gallon water for a disconnect for $88. The other $120 was penalties and whatever Jordan Tax Service wanted to put on it. I was not informed by PWSA or Jordan Tax Service that more than $100 in late fees and penalties could have been offset by a three-month payment plan, and I think that's unconscionable. After the water was disconnected, no matter what amount I placed on the bill, it was not enough. I was forced to carry gallons of water, gallons and gallons and gallons of water from the store with this affected, with food, money, and asked family and friends to provide some water as well, so wash dishes, bathe, and clean my floors. I have a severe spinal and nerve injury from a backwards fall at work five years ago this December, and I only have workers comp for medical-only. My family and friends helped me with other things to survive until I can get back to work. PWSA did not even try to find out what my circumstances were or indicate that my bill was less than $200, and they could work with me. They shuttled me from one office to the other. Since PWSA is a governmental authority, they're not eligible for, as you other people have said here, for the Dollar Energy Program, American Water, H2O, or can't be reported to a utility commission. For vulnerable, single, and elderly folks, that leaves church programs or grant from foundation. For a small number, it may mean petty theft or crime. I live in the Middle Hill, where close by is the Beaufort Avenue projects, where the median income may be about $10,000. Try to live on that. In my case, a benevolent church refused to allow me to suffer and pay the overage last week, and it will be turned on tomorrow because I needed time to get here today. A CAP program, a serious implementation of less than $200, a Dollar Energy Program, or other donation, foundation matching program would be very helpful for increasing utility costs, and I believe the other ladies have discussed that. It is possible to develop an indexed rate for those with low usage, low demand, all the way to the other end, to high uses, high utility demand, to offset a gap in fees. Vulnerable populations and family incomes can be overlaid on these indices, so a reasonable amount of money can be solicited from these customers. Thank you.
Next will be John Harris, and our final speaker will be Lisa Brown. Do we have any more cards?
Good evening. My mother told me to say, "I am John Harris." Not my name is John Harris. She's right here with me tonight. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking time to come out on a very important issue. My name, I'm a regional leader. I'm a regional leader in Action United, and we've been partners with Pittsburgh United, working together on this Clean Rivers Campaign. This issue is about water and our access to it. There is nothing more personal and essential to our lives. Water is the most precious resource, and it's important that we preserve it for everyone. So the work that you're doing to protect low-income ratepayers is truly critical for the community. We need to make sure that this project Alka-San has to do doesn't hurt the health of our community. As I said, as you all know, water is essential for a family's health and well-being. Skyrocketing rates, as things are, can put this in jeopardy, and this can't be. As a leader in Action United, I want to make sure that you understand this: we need to make sure the people's water does not get turned off. Turning off a family's water is a recipe for disaster. Alka-San, you need to figure out how we can use this CAP process to put an end to the practice of water shut-offs. Other options exist. We can turn down the water pressure or use other means of pressuring people to pay, of pressuring people to pay, but putting a family's health in jeopardy is not acceptable. As for the other issues that are important, I want to make sure that you're focused on making sure that this program is well-advertised and easy to enroll in. Partners with existing community organizations like ours and others to get the word out to our people. Listen to and use the social service agencies that already help people sign up for programs, and if possible, don't make people fill out even more paperwork. Can't we establish a system that makes sense by using applications that folks already fill out? For example, the welfare office could automatically submit the applications if someone signs up for assistance. In summary, in a perfect world, we would all be rich, and paying for a few more dollars for our bills would mean nothing, but in the real world, most of us are not rich. We cannot let these rate hikes devastate the elderly and lower-income families are your ratepayers. We need you to commit to making this program widely known and easy to sign up for, and commit to our modeling, moting water turnoffs as an enforcement mechanism. And my ideal idea for a CAP program wouldn't be customer assistance, it would be because Alka-San promised.
Lisa, if you could hold on one second. There was one that we had skipped over. I apologize. It said Urban League on it, so I thought that we'd covered it, but Spearline?
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. I'm just a little, my name's Geraldine Spearline, 14 Martha Street, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15223 Etna. I'm just a little person, but I came here to talk for myself, but as I go out here, I realize I want to be a voice for the elderly, which I am also in disability, for people that are on disabilities. My income is very low. It's below $10,000, and it won't go any higher because I haven't been able to work enough to even get Social Security ever. And as it is a break this second, I go somewhere else to drink water, or wash my clothes, or bathe, because it's just too much. And it's just very hard for me to make it, you know, day in and day out. And I try to be out of the house and be somewhere every day so that I can use the commute also. So it's right now, you know, it's just as hard as it is now, and it's going to get worse, you know. And I thank you for this program, and I, you know, everything you said was very true. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Spearline.
I am Lisa Brown, and my name is Lisa Brown. I live at 5735 Lauter Street in Lincoln Place, Pittsburgh. I'm also the watershed coordinator for Sawmill Run, and I want to thank this panel for having this hearing on a customer assistance program. But I'm curious about the empty seats. And I, listening to what every, all of the testimony tonight, what struck me is that, you know, Alka-San cannot do this on their own. Alka-San needs the partners of all the water companies, because what has transpired is that water is being turned off. The sewage isn't being turned off, the water is being turned off. The sewage goes through the sewer lines with water. So if your water is turned off, then you don't have sewage, right? You can't flush your toilet. So I think that I would like to see this happen in another few months, but I would like to see the other empty seats filled with representatives of the water companies, so that we can have a really coordinated effort that has a real impact on our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our final speaker, we, sorry, we got one last card, and it's Ms. Michelle, sorry, McGresson?
McMillan. Good evening. My name is Michelle McMillan. I live at 2018 D-Rod. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh, but before then, I lived in the Mon Valley. The water to me was very important. As a Girl Scout, I liked to go to the rivers and the creeks, but now because of the contamination, I can't even take my girls, which now I'm a Girl Scout leader, to no rivers or no creeks. I'm very sad to say, they can't receive their honors. They can't receive their buttons. Alka-San has done an injustice by allowing this water to get as bad as it has, and it shouldn't have gotten that way. We went and helped them clean up the creeks. We took all of debris out of the waters, so why cannot we have clean waters? One of my Girl Scouts right now is fighting to have her a place to stay. PWS has charged her for water that's not her fault. She was renting the house, she didn't own the house, but they're trying to force her to pay a water bill that was not her issue. Now one landlord passes it off to another landlord, but PWS is still demanding that she pays over $4,000 that was not her problem. I could go on and on and on, and I do have the proof of what I'm stating, but I'm begging you to please help Alka-San to give us our CAP program, because that's the only way a lot of us who don't have a big income can afford to pay that water bill. Like I said, I came from the Mon Valley. I don't know if y'all remember, but y'all remember when McKeesport Water was so polluted it smelt like gasoline? Well, that's the city I lived next to, and it was sad for me to see when they went out to clear out their water, when they found inside that reservoir dead bodies, skeletons of babies, and it was a shame that there was nobody cleaning up this water and has gotten this bad. Please, I beg you, make Alka-San do what they are supposed to do.
That's the last speaker for the night, and I'd like to just make a couple of comments before we close. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We've heard a lot of great stuff. I want to, you know, give you my assurance that all of this stuff is going to be part of our considerations as we move forward with creating this. And, you know, I think that there's a couple of things, a couple of general points I want to get across. Number one, we heard you, and we're going to make that part of what we do. Number two, we're going to do something, and we're going to do something soon. This is not something that we want to have endless meetings until. This is something that we're already talking about budgeting money for next year to get something in place. We want to lead the way on this. We know that it is complex. We know that there are many agencies involved in doing this, and maybe some of that stuff has to happen later if those agencies aren't on board with creating one, but we're going to lead the way on this. And I think finally, I want to also say that from the beginning, we have viewed this as no matter what happens, this is something that we need to revisit every year, that we need to visit year after year and see, is it working? How's it working? How can we improve it? How can we outreach better? You know, everything that you can think of on that. So I want you to know that all of these things have been things that are very much at the forefront for us. So thank you so much for coming out, and I'd open it, does anybody else on the?
I would just say, again, thank you to everybody for coming out. Greg has chaired our subcommittee, and he has done an incredible job. So I just wanted to point that out, that he has really taken the lead. Obviously, our chairman, Mr. Weinstein, has done a good job. And then I do want to thank Bill. Bill doesn't get thanked enough, but for his work on the budget to try to make this program work hopefully next year really deserves a thank you. And then the staff that set this up for Alka-San today, Jeannie and everyone, for getting this room and bringing all of your voices to the table. I will say this is a great time for this program. I'm going to talk more from a city council standpoint now. I heard today things that we're talking about as we continue to grow the city: affordable housing, water conservation. And I see Barney back there, so I know we were thinking of paid sick days as well. But these are all huge issues that we are talking about, and we brought it down to a local level at Alka-San, and I think that's great. It shows that we're progressive thinking on this new board, and it shows that we are hearing your voices. So I just really want to thank you because this is a broader conversation, but if we can help in one aspect, it's going to help those other dominoes fall as well. So just thank you for all of your efforts tonight, and then thank the committee. I forgot to thank Arletta, who's actually the boss, so I have to thank Arletta for all of her work as well, but thank you again.
Despite what the clock on the wall says, we haven't been here that long. They forgot to change the clock. I just want to say two things. First off, Sylvia Wilson is a member of this subcommittee, but she has a Pittsburgh School Board meeting this evening, and she could not be here. But Sylvia has worked very diligently, along with Cory and Greg, on this CAP program. So I don't want anyone to think that because she's not here, she's not concerned about this or dedicated to coming up with a program that's going to help everyone. And we are committed to this. I want to be crystal clear. We're not sitting here this evening because we had nothing else to do. This is very important to Alka-San, and this is very important to the million people that we service every day. And this is not easy by any stretch of the imagination, and don't let anyone kid you. Working with 83 individual municipalities is a challenge in itself, very, very difficult. And Alka-San has never, ever shut someone's water off, and we never will. That is not our function. Lisa said it very eloquently, one of the speakers, but we are going to work with all the municipalities, we're going to work with the water companies that supply the water, and come up with a comprehensive program that helps everyone. And no one sitting up here on this panel knows more about this low-income people than I do. In my office, I have 55,000 senior citizens that live in this county that make $30,000 or less, and they qualify for our Senior Discount Tax Program, 55,000 of them. And I deal with them every year on their county property taxes. So I'm very, very aware of the importance of this program. And I can commit to you on behalf of this organization that we will work with everyone in this room to make sure that it's user-friendly, it's easy to understand, and everyone that is eligible can comply and benefit from it. And I'd like to thank our court reporter, who has done a good job here this evening in taking this all on. It's also on video, and this will be available on the Alka-San website for people to see that could not be here this evening. So I thank everyone again for coming, and we appreciate your input, and we take it very, very seriously. Thank you.[1791.28][1791.28]